I most certainly think they will.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Good afternoon, it's three o'clock on September 12th, 2023. We're in the Commission Chambers for UNA County Commission. Before we go much further, if you haven't, please silence your telephones so we don't have interruptions. And if you haven't also, before you leave, please sign the roster saying you were here. We'll excuse Commissioner Horick as he's not available right now to another meeting. And with that, we will start with a prayer by Heidi Lindberg and a pledge by Tanya Craven. Yes, to the mic, please.
Please.
Dear Lord, we are grateful for thee and grateful we could be in this county and we ask thee to please be with us as we conduct county business, that we can do what's right for our county and so we are grateful for all that thou has given to us and we say it in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ladies, we appreciate that. Before we go any further, we have three beautiful ladies here who would like to introduce themselves.
Can you guys go up to the microphone, please? I'll push the, there's a button, a red button.
Fancy, hello, okay, we got her. So hello everyone, my name is Jacobi Christensen and I am your new Miss UNA County this year. And while competing for Miss UNA County, you are entitled to have a serve initiative, which is basically just like a platform of how you're going to change the world, or change UNA County. And mine is called Kindness Pass It On, so this year I plan to serve UNA County through kindness and service and really just get out there and make sure people know who I am and know how hard I'm willing to work to serve UNA County. Thank you.
Hi everyone, I'm Emma Shelton, I'm your new Miss UNA County Teen Volunteer. And my serve initiative is type one day at a time. So six years ago, my brother Timber was actually diagnosed with type one. And so I am giving support and education to the community and friends and family for type one diabetics and so they can understand and help others.
Hi, my name is Lakin Stubbs and I am your new Miss UNA County Volunteer Princess. My serve initiative is Fit for the Future and I'd like to show kids that fitness can be so much fun. I am so excited that I get to serve my community this year, thank you.
Thank you very much ladies, very nice. Okay, back to our schedule. We'll have the approval of the minutes for August 21st, 23 work session, August 22nd meeting.
I would make a motion to approve those minutes as stated.
I'll second. Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Pass is unanimous. Second, Mr. Wilkins, report of warrants, please.
Commissioners, I have warrants from September 1st in the amount of $489,355.32. Most, a lot of those through this one was paying for costs for the Phenomenicon and Energy Summit. Next one is September 8th, amount of $298,909.87 and just monthly bills on those. And with some carryover of the Phenomenicon ones.
Alright, thank you.
That was only out of the ordinary was them things.
Okay.
You okay?
Sorry.
I know CPR. I'll bet they, you better lay down, I'll bet you they helped you with CPR.
Do you have any tax matters?
I do. Commissioners, a few weeks ago, I presented a settlement agreement with Asphalt Ridge Inc., State Appeal Number 23-1083. This is on serial number 500203617. This is a reduction in their value, it was initiated by the county assessor. And between them and the state tax commission, we have a revised value that lowers the new market value from, for this property from $1,052,746 down to $592,000. There's no refund on this because we're able to get this done before tax notices go out. So we need final approval now on this since we have received the stipulation. So it's been signed and we have a final order of approval from the tax commission.
Okay, thanks. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that we approve this stipulation?
It's appeal, appeal number 23-1083.
Okay. As stated by Clerk Auditor Wilkins, in the amount, I guess, reduction from $1,052,746 to four, $592,000.
Whoop, just.
Is that correct?
Their new value is $460,746.
Okay, that's different than what you said.
Right. Five, I'm just reading, the difference is 592.
Oh, okay, so it's reduced to 400 and what was it?
60,746.
Okay, so that's the reduction in value.
Correct, reduction in value.
For the tax citing number 500203617?
Correct.
I would make a motion we approve that.
I'll second. Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Do we have any other tax matters, sir?
I do not, I, do you have any tax matters?
No, I do not.
Okay. Mr. Wilkins, you're still on with Amendment Number One to the Election Services Agreement.
Commissioners, if you remember, early spring, we presented a, wore a blanket election agreement with all the cities and special service districts. Since the governor changed election day from November 7th to November 21st, we felt like we need to make that change in this agreement because election day will be the 21st, not the 7th. So that is the only thing changing is the actual election day.
And we are stipulating that to just this year?
Correct, that is only for this year.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the Amendment Number One to Election Services Agreement as presented.
I'll second. Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Alright. Ms. Lindberg, you're up.
Heidi Lindberg, Emergency Management. I have a grant award document from the Utah Department of Public Safety Division of Emergency Management. It is the Emergency Management Performance Grant that helps support the emergency management program in UNA County. The amount awarded is $36,000 this year, so.
And is that a matching grant or is this your?
Yeah, so it's a 50/50 grant, so the matching can be with the emergency management salary or any of the other expenses in emergency management. So, we already match it with having an emergency manager, so.
Alrighty, do I have a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the Emergency Management Performance Grant, or we accept it, the Emergency Management Performance Grant Award in the amount of $36,000.
I'll second that. Vote.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. That was quick. Okay, our next is the pickleball court contribution to Vernal City. Commissioner Norton will handle that one.
Yes, um, this was brought to our attention when we received an invoice to pay $20,000 towards the pickleball courts that were billed over by Independ-, well, an Independence Park over by the Vernal Middle School, if you're familiar with that. And when we received that, we could not find anywhere where we had approved to pay this amount toward the pickleball courts. And since there is not an approval or an agreement anywhere, then we need to bring that to a formal meeting and discuss and approve what we do want to do. So I did ask Quinn Benyon with Vernal City because he helped spearhead this, getting the pickleball, pickleball courts put up here in our community. So, he had a lot of participation by different organizations, including the county, to build those pickleball courts. And I just wanted to mention those here. The UNA Special Service District One, which is pretty much considered the rec district or the rec center, they contributed $100,000. The UNA School District contributed $70,000. Vernal City contributed $40,000. UNA County contributed $20,000, or is being asked to contribute $20,000. UNA Basin Healthcare contributed $20,000. Ashley Regional contributed $15,000. The Healthy and Active Committee contributed $10,000. And Rocky Mountain Power Foundation contributed $5,000. The total for the cost of the pickleball courts was $280,000. So just so you know, some of these things we've put in our community, they're really nice, but they do cost a lot of money to do. Seems easy, seems, should be a lot cheaper, but just so you understand that they're a great addition to our community, I think they're being well utilized. I don't know how many of you play pickleball, but anyway, I think it's great that we can bring those into our community for everyone to utilize. So I just wanted to bring that onto the agenda and I would also make the motion that we approve the $20,000 as requested.
Okay, before I second that, let me open it up for any public comment. Do we have anybody who want to speak specifically on the pickleball courts? For, against, or in between?
I wouldn't use it.
That's because you're getting old. Okay, no comments being heard, we'll close it. I'll second that motion. Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. I must apologize on number seven.
Yeah, I know enough about it.
Oh, do you, okay, I didn't get the schedule, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the exact amount though, so I think what we were talking about is, there's been discussion over the last year or two, I believe, by our deputy chief, chief deputy attorney, John Stermer. He is very involved in the arts and the musicals and the theater, theatrical things that are brought to our community. And he had brought to the commission's agenda that he wanted to create a musical for John Wesley Powell, who is one of the founders that floated the Green River, through our community. And he proposed that to the previous commission and they approved him to move forward with getting the music rights and putting a musical together. But there was never any amount stipulated in any agreements or improvement, and agreements or contracts or anything that we could find in any of the agendas or minutes from previous meetings. They did just approve for him to move forward with the endeavors to secure the music, to make a musical. It is to be presented at the Outlaw Trail Theater next year in 2024, I believe it's in June. But it is to be presented then. And so he did bring us an invoice for some more fees to be paid and I just felt like we needed to bring this forward in a commission meeting so that we could discuss the options and what we want to do as far as moving forward with the production of this musical and how much money. I think we need to put a limit or an amount that we feel is necessary and should work for this. I feel bad that he's not here to speak to it because I'm sure he would say a lot more and a lot more eloquently than I am about this matter. But that is what he's asked, that's what we're kind of asking because there have been some, an amount, I believe it was $3,360 for some advertising to promote this, promote this musical for next year. And that's what brought this to our attention. So, I don't know if you have any other questions or if you want to discuss anything, Commissioner Larson?
He asked for $15,000 ongoing, which would mean $15,000 this year, $15,000 next year for the production, which I have some real heartburn with because it was never passed. We can't find any record of it all in any of our conversations, recordings, meetings. My recommendation would be that we limit him to another $10,000 maximum and that's all there is.
From now till the production?
From now till the production is in July.
Okay. I don't disagree with that, I think that's a good place to go. And then if there is anything else that needs to be brought back to the commission, we can do that at another date. So, I.
Okay, let me open this up for public comment. Do I have any comments pertaining to this? Yes, sir?
You have to come up to the microphone, please, and state your name.
Willis LaFevere, and I would just be concerned, maybe this is a question from Mike, where the money comes from, what, what bucket or sub-bucket? You know, we kind of had that conversation, I'm trying to get my arms wrapped around a little bit, where that money comes from? And to his comment, you know, is one-time deal, one and done kind of thing or ongoing, kind of maybe a little more in detail there. Thanks, Mike.
Only funding available for this is just out of general miscellaneous. If that's the governing body's decision to, I mean, there's been no line item set up specifically for this. We can do that, we have paid some attorney fees that was paid because of conflict of interest of him trying to do his own contract. As far as any rights in that, I cannot find any or need to do more research. I don't think we've paid any musical rights that I'm aware of. I've been told there's some coming.
I think we've paid some through the contract. The contract that we have is specifically for musical rights and that's through Shapiro, Shapiro. So I think that's where that's going, yes.
That's the one representing the county.
For the rights, to obtain the rights from the.
So they're the ones actually trying to get the rights then?
Right, I believe that's what that, that money was for, that's our understanding.
We paid an attorney, but I'm not sure exactly what it is that we're paying.
That's what it was for.
Okay, so I do believe you are correct. That's why this wasn't very clear, when I read the agreement that was signed previously, it did not state an amount. It did not state that it was for production, for, as far as I can tell, it was just to secure the musical rights so that he could put the, the musical together.
So you said that there was one there for advertising? Wouldn't the Outlaw Trail Festival be doing the advertising for that?
I brought that up as a question, that's another reason that stirred this to come to a meeting because I felt like it, usually that's through the Arts Council, the, the Outlaw Trail is all done through the Arts Council. So I still have questions about that. There is an invoice pending right now to move forward with the advertising and that's what we will try to resolve before moving forward.
So just out of my memory, from, from what I heard in last year or in the, in the past on that, that, that this is a private entity that would own this and the only thing that UNA County would have was the rights to use it. And then the private entity would have the rights to sell it elsewhere, if my memory serves me right.
I am not an attorney.
I don't, I, nor am I.
But I.
But that's just, that's kind of, you know, was a private entity, kind of putting it all together. And UNA County was to have the rights to use it and that's all I remember out of that, so.
I would have to ask for.
Be careful with that.
Yes, I would have to ask for an interpretation from the, our attorney because I read the contract and I still am not clear if we have the rights to the music, the musical, to release that or let someone use that, or if it is just the rights to use it for our production.
My understanding was the right to use it.
So, thank you.
That's my understanding also.
We will, I think we need to clarify a few things before we can make a decision on this. But I, right now, I like what Commissioner Larson is saying, but I thi-, I think we do need to wait till next week.
That's fine.
And, and check into a few more of these items, to be clear. And plus then, John Stermer could be here to talk to this matter more.
Thank you.
We'll close public comment. After public comment, I'm not gonna second your motion, in fact, I'm gonna take this and continue it till the next meeting.
Oh, I, yeah, I put that it's tabled.
So. Alright, time for public comment. Public comment is time for public comment, not public debate. The county will listen to the comments made and take them into consideration. The county will not be responding to comments or answering questions. Comments made might not be something the county has the power to act on. This is a recorded public hearing, if someone would like to make a comment, they will need to wait until the microphone is available and state their name for the record. Please be respectful, no interrupting, please wait your turn. A total of 10 minutes will be allotted for public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their comment. Let's make it 12 minutes because three times 12 works.
Three times four.
Yeah, three times 12, whatever. I know what I mean, you know what I mean.
Times 12, 36, we could do 36.
Alright, any comments, any public comments? No comments about my math, sir.
Alright, I won't make any comments about math. Scott Hardman, UNA County, Buckskin Hills. I talked to Brad about bringing this to the commission meeting. I'd like to introduce and, and bring Randy Perry with, he's the owner of the Works Racing and have him talk a little bit about the first annual event we have here at Vernal and how excited we are to have him.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Randy Perry, I'm the owner of Works Racing. I visited up here last year in June, remarkable city. I was, I was impressed how clean it is, how great all the people were and all the eateries and where I stayed. You have a lot to do around in this county, it's pretty impressive, really impressive. I've been to a lot of peo-, a lot of places in Utah and Idaho. I like all of them, but I really like this place a lot, so I didn't have it on the schedule for next year. Reason being, I had a little problem of getting equipment rented. I started three months ago and I kept on getting zeros. I brought a lot of my stuff up, but Scott has, has helped, helped me tremendously, tremendously make my decision to, to come up next year. As of right now, we have a pre-registration, we're at like 525, which is huge. I was expecting like 175. So that predicts that we'll probably be bringing 15 to 1800 racers and their families into your town. So, it should be a great academic, economic impact to your community, which I'm all about. I do go to, like I said, I go to Cedar City, I go to Delta, I go to Preston, Idaho. I try to go to little towns such as my, where I come from in Lake Havasu City in Arizona. When I moved there, there was only 8,000 people. Now we're pushing 115 and everyone else in Orange County, so. I just wanted to come up and say that I really appreciate you guys having us here. If we do have any mishaps or anything from anybody in my party, I'd like to know from, I already talked with Mindy, I believe. She's been directing us with a lot of help also. So, that's all I really wanted to say, if you have any questions, I can answer for you.
Yes, sorry, I'm trying to think of who you were talking about, I think it's Maddie.
Maddie, okay, sorry.
No, that's okay.
My girls handle a lot of other girls, so I kind of get, I'm bad with that.
Well, I, I feel bad that you had a problem with finding rental equipment.
I've never had a problem with that, you know, I have accounts at most of the same places, you know, Wheeler and stuff. They just didn't have what I needed and I was a little discouraged, so myself, I usually don't come up this early, I've been here since last Thursday, I believe. So I came up here and then, like I said, Scott already had, everything I asked for is 10 times over. So I'm so impressed with not just Scott, but people in the community. I go into any store that I've been into and they're, they're just, it's great to see people that are still open a door for you. People that care about each other. Your community, I mean, it's beautiful, you guys have schools, ball fields. Your library is incredible for this small of a town, I'm just totally impressed, so.
Well, thank you.
I'd like to come back next year and keep on coming back, so if we can help you out in any way.
Yes, and explain a little bit about what your event is.
Okay, so, Works is World Off-Road Championship Series. We do have, we have racers, we have side-by-side racing, we have quads and motorcycles. We have all your, all your big manufacturers will be here, KTM, Polaris, Can-Am. All the people you see that race Baja and all that and the bigger races that are televised, they're here. We have an eight-and-a-half mile course we built out there on virgin land, it's going to be a little tough to, to manage. But as we beat it in, it'll get better and better each year. And also, I was telling Scott, now you have something else out there that you can revenue money from. Because, I mean, I went to Cedar City on private land, they have a water park there, that's how it all started, Three Peaks Oasis. The first year, the track reacted really bad, I was kind of disappointed. But then the second year got better and this year was phenomenal. We had over almost 2,000 entries there and we had Memorial Day party there. That, there was a bit of impact on that community. I believe this year he has three other races scheduled out there. So that's private land revenue and pretty good money, you know? And I think you're going to have the same thing out there because you have people in your community that push for your community. So, the more things you have to offer, it's better for it.
And that's going on Saturday, Sunday?
So we open the gates Thursday at 3:00, it'll close at 10, we'll be stocking, you'll see a lot of big rigs coming into town. Then we're open at 5:00 AM till 10:00 on Saturday and Sunday we'll be open at 5:00 till we stop at 5:00. So we have racing, we have practice Thursday, moto practice, unclassified, you'll see the course, so you don't see it blind when you get into your race. Most of the races are an hour, pros race for two hours on motorcycles, quads hour and a half and pro cars race for an hour. So practice Friday, racing all day Saturday and Sunday. We'll clean up Monday and probably pull out of here Tuesday morning.
Great, okay, sounds awesome.
Been in business for 22 years all around the West Coast, so.
Well, we're happy to have you, thank you.
I'm happy to be here, that's why I came in, just to say thank you.
Certainly appreciate it.
Alright, great community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Did you want to let John come explain?
Have you got a few minutes? We tabled you, but if you want to come on up, we're. Yes, you barely, by the skin of your teeth.
Oh, we've got another comment, public comment. You need to sit up on the front row so it's easier for you.
He needs exercise.
I'll work on that. I just, I just want to say regarding Scott and the Buckskin Hills out there, I, I must admit, in the beginning, I was very stupid skeptical about the Buckskin Hills. And I love the, the dirt oval and going out there and watching it. But as I traveled from Vernal to the ranch over White Rocks and stop at the La Pointe Store, Buckskin Hills is, is really, has a lot of support in the outlying community. The drag strip, you, you can't stop at the La Pointe Store and not get a conversation about the drag strip and those kinds of things. And so my mind's kind of been open and as I talk around about what, what they're doing there with the racing. I think it's, it's becoming, Buckskin Hills is becoming way more accepted in the county as a whole with these outlying things and, you know, just the bad press on the snow hill kind of thing is kind of going away with, with some of these other kinds of things. And I think this here is, is an opportunity for Buckskin Hills to really shine and create revenue instead of the cost feeling. And so, kudos to you two and what you're doing there. I've heard really good things and so hopefully we can get them what they need, Scott, and, and they'll come back because this, this is really a big thing. Like a big thing. And so I think it's a really, really good event for the community, so thank you for your support and thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Take a seat up close, you're going to be up in just a minute, Willis. Take a seat up close, you're going to be up in just a minute. Do you have any other further comments?
That is this weekend, correct?
Yes, out at Buckskin Hills, so tell your friends and go out and check it out.
Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. We are, before we adjourn, we're going to go back up to Item 7, John Wesley Powell Musical Production Expenses as Schedule. Attorney John Stermer has arrived and he's the one who needs to answer our questions.
Yes.
I'm here.
Okay.
Well, we, we brought up the fact that there was never an. Well, we, we brought up the fact that, um, there was never an approved amount, that there had been discussion, but it was never, we can't find where it was ever put in an agreement or approved in a meeting or anything, so that we might wanna address that issue, and then also that, um, we weren't quite clear on the rights. Is it rights for us to use the music, or the rights are kind of ours to let other people use? That's where we weren't clear.
Okay, no, yeah, these, these are great questions, so, let me, let me address the, the funding part first, I guess, since that's, uh, more of the pressing issue, because there's some work that V6 Media is waiting to, to perform for, or to do for the county, and then also, um, Evans Family Media with the radio stations and getting some stuff put out this fall, so that's kind of where this, this came in with that first, that first bill that came in. So, back when this was being discussed, which is now coming up on a year and a half, two years, something like that, when all this was first being, being contemplated, and then the last year where it all kinda came together, uh, through, uh, a licensing agreement. I had this idea of doing a musical on John Wesley Powell, and have that based on, specifically, mostly on what he did on the Green River, of course, you gotta tell the whole story about him getting through the Grand Canyon and everything, but it would be kind of a musical to help showcase our area, and where the county has been doing the John Wesley Powell River Festival since 2019, um, and next year being the hundred-and-fifty-fifth anniversary of his expedition. That seemed to be, hey, can we get this as being part of that year's celebration? Where we would have the, the musical at the start of the summer, the River Festival at the end of the, well, not really the end of the summer, but later on in the summer. And so those would be kind of the two bookends for next year, and then we could fill up the rest of the summer, kinda just keep things promoting, uh, that way, so. I came to the county commission with this idea. The way that it all played out, there's, there's two parts now getting to how it goes into the actual intellectual property ownership. There's, there's two parts of that, one is the actual musical, that's the intellectual property part, copyright. Who, who owns the musical, and then what rights are there? The, the way we had that, um, worked out in the agreement between the county and myself, was that the county would own the musical, and have the right to be able to use that musical anywhere within Ewona County, with myself not charging anything. Basically, it's a free musical to Ewona County. Now, I can only do the written part of the music, musical, because the music is actually owned by the artist who wrote the music. So that's where, in the licensing document, you'll see that the county agreed that they would, um, work to acquire the rights to use the music from Alan Doyle for the musical. And then in that license, outside of Ewona County, I have a, a license to then be able to use the, the musical anywhere outside of Ewona County. But Ewona County gets a free musical within the boundaries of Ewona County. Then, so that's that part, dealing with the copyright and intellectual property. Then there's the topic of, okay, how do we actually get this from a thought to an actual production in 2024? The county obviously is not in the business of doing musicals. We don't, we have a stage, that's, that's what we have, so there was a multi, multi-pronged approach on how to do that, with doing some renovations to the stage, obviously securing the musical stuff, and then the question was, okay, who can we get to actually put on the musical? And because Outlaw Trail does their, and they do their annual summer show, uh, every single year, and they have volunteers in our community that readily sign up and, and do that. Uh, the, the county, I was part of that conversation, but so was, uh, Commissioner Horricks and Commissioner Haslam, uh, talked to Outlaw Trail and said, would you all be willing to do this as your summer production? So they said, yes, we would, we'll, we can do the, the directing, we can, you know, we'll have the volunteers, that would still be the actors and everything else. But because it's a brand-new musical, and the stage would have to be quite a bit different to do something that you're, you know, you're introducing a river concept rather than just a, a flat wooden stage, the county was still gonna be in charge of making sure the set was in place and ready to go. And then also, you need additional publications, I'll use this example, even in this crowd, if I think if I use the terms Les Mis, or Beauty and the Beast, or Newsies, or Hamilton, everybody knows what I'm talking about. If I say musical on John Wesley Powell, people are gonna be like, what the crap is that? So there needs to be more, uh, publicity given to get people to come out and buy, buy tickets, so. This, uh, stuff with V6 Media is to do, uh, a couple thirty-minute spots, a couple fifteen-minute spot, thirty-second spots, fifteen-second spots. That can go through social media, it can be the ads that you see like at the, um, Vernal Cinema, where you have the local ads before they show the movies. It can quickly pop up on there, people can see it as they jump on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, V6 Media does that. Uh, they do that quite a bit with travel and tourism already, and then we'd have the radio spots. So, the stuff going on this fall is introducing it to the community, kinda, hey, here's what's coming next year. And then, uh, in late January, early February, there'll be a push saying, coming this year, with the specific dates and everything, and, and then, I think it's about a six-week push before opening night to, here's where you buy your tickets, and it would have the link where you click on and take you to the, the ticket site.
Was that all in that one?
No, that's just, that's just for this fall. The, the total amount, um, I think for V6 Media, for both pushes, is, that's about three thousand dollars, the total amount's nine thousand dollars, so it's three thousand this year, six thousand next year. So where does that come into the funding? The, the, the reason there wasn't anything put in writing, because it's coming out of general miscellaneous, it was, is the county wanting to do this, just like half, half dozen other things that the county does, where it just comes out of that line item. But the understanding was that there would be fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, last year, we really didn't need any of that money, because it took so long to get to the point where we were actually signing license agreements with the publishers of the songs, that has all taken place this year. And so, this year, out of the fifteen thousand dollars this year, we have roughly fifteen to two thousand dollars for Joseph Shapiro as outside counsel on copyright things, I think it's about fifteen hundred dollars. Then we have-
I calculated about seven thousand this year.
Not for Shapiro.
But I, I was, some of them I wasn't sure about, well, that were in the miscellaneous, that I was trying to calculate.
Joseph Shapiro was-
No, not just for legal, I just meant for-
Well, yeah, and I'm adding those up, what, what, what's that's coming to, so you have about fifteen hundred for Joseph Shapiro, and right now we have just under five thousand for musical, because there's still, for music, there's still a couple publishers that are being really slow. But all the other ones are on board, and if they end up falling out, we have enough songs anyway, so we're in, we're in good shape. But that amount is five thousand dollars, so it's not going to exceed that, so you'd have that amount of money, plus Joseph Shapiro's amount, and then the leftover of the fifteen thousand was gonna go to the publication and publicity, and then if there's anything remaining, if we needed to pick up, you know, a a, a stack of plywood or some two-by-fours, you like pre, pre-buy it, so it's ready to go, have it come out of this year's budget, then that's less money we'd have to spend next year, if we have some leftover. And then next year, all the music will already be covered, so the re, the request for next year, fifteen, would be going all basically to make sure the stage is ready to go.
Oh, the six thousand for the advertising will, will be next year?
Come out of that, yeah.
Next year.
Yeah, that's six thousand would go to the fif- twenty twenty-four fifteen thousand.
That, and, um, do you know, I know we asked Outlaw Trail to do this, but they typically put one on anyway, so. Are we going to get the money from the ticket sales then, or how does that work, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, that part, we, we still, it has come up in conversations, we still need to work it out. Outlaw Trail, um, you know, when they do their summer production, they wanna make sure they're bringing in something that can guarantee about forty-five thousand dollars worth of ticket sales. Of course, not all of that's profit, right? A, a bulk of it goes to licensing, goes to sound and lights, goes to rental of soundboards, goes to all, all number of things.
Usually your stage stuff as well.
It goes, it goes to a lot, it goes to a lot of stuff. So that part, we still need to work out, I've, I've talked with Outlaw Trail and Jay Haslam. They haven't quite engaged on that yet, because they will, I think they're making sure we got the rights to the music, quite frankly, 'cause it's been going on. But that's, that's a discussion we do need to have for 2024.
Because I, I would really like to recoup some of the money if we could from, and especially where we're paying for things that typically they pay for, like the set, you know, putting the setup and-
Yeah, and, and some of that is, so the, the idea's on the set, now remember, this is, this was a multi-year thing that was being discussed, the set was going to be a lot different than it is now, because what was planned in the, the plans that were drawn up, everything that was approved with funding, about two-thirds of that funding is now no longer available, it's been sucked up in other Western Park projects. So the set itself won't have water features, at least very little. It won't have a way to actually carry what would be like a, a boat actually going on the stage that you would see in, in other types of productions, this is gonna be, now it's gonna necessitate a, a pretty static stage, where what was being contemplated was something a lot more. So, it, this revenue wasn't going to supplant Outlaw Trail's budget on their stage, it was going to supplement so that there could be a better stage for this production, to make it an actual river-type venue. That obviously now has to be completely redone, because that stage isn't coming, so.
Although I wouldn't mind having discussion on that, though, how much more would that add to the, the project?
Yeah, and that's where, right now, the, the focus has really been on, we, we needed to, uh, license the music. Can't have a musical without music, and I don't write music, so, that was really the focus, and that has taken, I mean, I started working on that fall of 2019. So I'm, I'm four years into securing those rights, uh, with the music. So that's really where everything is like, okay, we gotta make sure that gets done. That has now, we, we got everything we would need. Like I said, still a couple songs that I would want to get, and with that five thousand dollars, but if we, you know, not getting them, I'll just, I'll just trash those two scenes and move on.
Okay.
So that, yeah, that's, that's where we are in the process, um, but we are moving to that promotional side now, and that's where that, that bill came in from V6 Media.
Okay, that clarifies a lot.
Yep.
Okay, I'll open it up again for public comment.
Is there any questions?
So is this fifteen thousand just this year and next year, or is it ongoing for years and years to come?
No, just, it was just, uh,
Get the production done.
Last year, this year, and next year. But last year, obviously, things got stalled out, 'cause we didn't move on anything, until we had some other moving parts figured out, it didn't make any sense to spend any money, so. The only thing that came out of that fifteen thousand dollars last year was Joseph Shapiro's legal fees. That's, and I don't, I can't remember how much that was.
I don't remember how much it was.
Yeah.
It was, it was probably five to-
So you would say, so you're saying if we were to say we will approve a total of thirty thousand, that would be for this year and next year? That's what you're needing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's-
That's what you're asking.
Yeah, fifteen for this year, understanding the money that's already been spent into that fifteen, and then for next year, having fifteen thousand dollars to do the remainder, the remainder of the promotion, and hopefully get the, the infrastructure of the stage where we need it to be, that then they could build the regular stage on top of. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, the question now, on the, the licensing of this, of the musicals, of the music. Are we paying Shapiro for that, and then he's paying the company, or do we?
No, we've been writing, those checks have been coming through with purchase orders and everything.
For the actual people that own the music?
Yeah, it's going to BMG Music, Sony.
I've seen those, that's the ones that he's adding.
They're all coming, Con- Concord, there's, there's, uh, I think nine or ten different publishing companies. 'Cause each person who helps write a song has an interest in the song. So we have a spreadsheet that both the artist Alan Doyle, our side has verified, and then also, all, all the other artists have verified, do they have fifty percent right? Do they have a thirty-three percent right? Do they have, you know, whatever their interest is in that song? So it ends up being five thousand dollars total, divide that by thirteen, that gives you how much per song, three hundred and seventy dollars or whatever it is. Then you take fifty or thirty percent off of that, and that's what each artist gets in there.
So kinda leading to Sonia's question, so when we start, when this production comes off, is outlaw, and that's the discussions you're still having, Outlaw Trail Festival needs to kick in on some of these, reimbursement, some of these expenses, I would think.
Yeah, well, and it, and it's fingers crossed, right, that people-
Show up to the play.
Show up to a play they've never heard about before. So it, it, it is, yeah, we're, we, the county asked Outlaw Trail to take their highest revenue generating play, 'cause they do three a year now, but take their highest revenue, revenue generating one and say, hey, would you guys wanna do this brand-new play? So, but that's, yeah, those are discussions that we ob- obviously need to have, and that's not me. That, that's, 'cause I'm not on that side.
Now, if I remember right, there was something in the contracts, though, that says something about ticket sales, that they get a percentage of the ticket sales.
Meaning the, the publishers?
Yes.
Yeah, so, the way it was negotiated is there would be a five thousand dollar right, that's actually started August first of this year, for in-context promotions, running through August thirty-first of 2024. Because you would do some after-the-show, hey, thanks for coming, you know, great production, blah, 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 you could run a little bit of publicity afterwards, to then push, come to the River Festival in August of 2024. That was the idea, we'd run the musical, and then we're trying to push publicity to say, hey, come to our party in a couple months that we're also going to have. So that's why we ran the, the rights to use the music for thirteen months, rather than just the window of the show. So we paid five thousand dollars for that total right, thirteen months, and the right to use it during the musical. If the ticket sales go above that, that, that's based off of four percent gross of ticket sales, what we anticipate what the ticket sales actually will be, actually, it's a lot higher. If we, uh, if we had sold-out shows for like a whole week, and then other shows, we still wouldn't get to four percent of gross ticket sales to match five thousand dollars. So if, but let's say we do have sold-out shows for two weeks, that would then exceed that five thousand, so we would have, we would take four percent off of gross ticket sales and distribute that money back out to the publishers. But ultimately, that's what, and that is, that's the going rate in the industry, to use a song for theatrical purposes, it's four percent of gross ticket sales.
And then we can't use it after that?
No, we would have to re, if we, if there was a production, for example, let's say Vernal Theater Live wanted to do it, or the high school wanted to do it, or five years from now, Outlaw Trail decided they wanted to do it, we'd have to renegotiate again on the music, 'cause we don't have a perpetual right. But on the dialogue that I'm coming up with, the county does have a perpetual right. There's no, there's no royalty, there's no nothing on that, the county just has that for their use. We, we tried to get a perpet- Joseph Shapiro and myself tried to get a perpetual right, but again, we're dealing with something that nobody knows about. So Alan Doyle, who I've actually met, great guy, but he was a little reluctant to say, yeah, I'm gonna give you a perpetual right to use my music. I think once, if we got it off the ground and then wanted to go back and say, hey, if we do this, can we get something worked out? He'd probably be a lot more receptive to it, but. They're treating, they're treating me like somebody from-
Ten Buck Two?
Ten Buck Two, I mean, they, they don't know who, they don't know who we are.
I think that answered all my questions.
Do we have any other questions? Here we close public comment. Oh, wait, Willis is on his way up.
Told you he'd take a seat up front.
I don't know why he's coming up, I don't know how much we spend on the John Wesley Powell Festival. I have, I haven't, I didn't look that up before this meeting, but, just wondering how this plays in with that.
I have no idea.
Okay.
So my question would just be, kind of a follow-up to my previous question, on where does the money come from? What bucket does it come out of? You said miscellaneous- What bucket does it come out of? You said miscellaneous. You know, what can miscellaneous funds be used for other than, you know, I just, I mean, if it works out and it's great and it's not a burdensome, it's not burdensome to, you know, finances to the citizens of the Uwena County. That's, that's one thing. But I mean, you know, if, if, from what I understand, we're tight on funds and where can the funds come from? And, and this isn't a lot in comparison to what we may be needing. But, um, I think all those things, we just can't, we gotta be careful on what we burden the people with. I mean, you know, I don't have a problem with the, what's going on. Um, it feels somewhat private, but, you know, I, I don't know. So
I have the same feelings.
Those are just some of the, in my mind, some of the concerns and questions I have as a citizen, you know, so anyway, it's.
Um, I, I had the same feelings back when I was a member of the public, uh, not understanding fully what it was going to be and how it was working. So, um, I do know now, being in this position, we do a lot of things for the county that are similar to this that don't make money. They're travel and tourism kind of along those lines. I mean, it's for the citizens of the county to be able to participate and come to these events, these events that we have. I mean, we, we prep stuff for him, you know, that costs money. But what's the return on it, I guess, is what we look at to the community and bringing people to our community. Um, it's not just dollars, changing dollars, how much it costs versus how much we'll make off of it. It's kind of the return to the community and to the people that come to the community. So I, you know, I think there's things like this that we've done in the past. We've created the John Wesley Powell Festival that didn't used to be here till then. There's a lot of things we keep adding. The dinosaur days, balloons, the holidays came, how many years ago? About twelve, thirteen, I think now? We started that. And look at what some of these things have turned into and how, what they've done for our community. So I know that's something we weigh out as well when we look at the costs. And that's why we're here. That's the job we get to do, is try to weigh those things out and, and decide if it's beneficial for the community.
Are there nothing else that close about to comment?
I, I know he, he would like to get something so that he can move forward with the advertising, if he's going to do that this fall. Getting all these answers was very helpful. And I can, I feel like I can be more supportive where he was under the understanding it was fifteen thousand a year, even though that wasn't approved. And we didn't use fifteen thousand last year makes me feel even better. And we've already spent probably close to ten with his advertising, I would guess, if this is approved. Um, to go ahead with, uh, I will go approve, I want to make a motion to approve a total of thirty thousand for the John Wesley Powell musical production and expenses. Well, expenses and schedule, which includes the music rights, uh, the musical, the set, all of it, anything that's involved with it for 2023 and 2024.
Right, that's fifteen thousand each year, correct?
Yes.
All right. I'll second that. Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. We approve.
Perfect. No, that'll, that'll be great. And if it, um, if at any time you guys need a status update of where it's at, that sort of thing, then I can, I can provide that. We're gonna be, I didn't mention in this part all, because I wanted to wait until afterwards to see how it went. But we are working with Leisha because of her marketing net that she has regionally and nationally. When we get these, uh, produced by V six media, we're able to tie that right into her marketing's, uh, scheme already. And so we've been working with Leisha on that end. I kind, there was a question offline, but I'll bring it up here. Kind of people wondering, well, why, why isn't Leisha doing this? Really, it was because I didn't want to put more on Leisha's plate. It's kind, I kind of like that thing. If you have an idea, a good idea, you better be willing to do it yourself. Then have a good idea and say, yeah, but why doesn't Jack do it? So I kind of, I've been working with Leisha, but I haven't wanted to feel like, oh, here, here's a great idea. Now, why don't you guys just go do it? So, but if there are any questions, we definitely want to make sure we're all synced up with, with Leisha's department. No, nobody knows how to promote Uwena County better than she does, so. Keep, keep her completely in, in the loop on it.
Definitely. I agree.
Okay.
I would make a motion. We adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies, for coming.
Nice to meet you. Good luck on the next year.
Thank you.
And all your speaking and everybody you get to see and visit with and it's signature and pictures and oh my gosh. Next thing you know, you're gonna be seeing nothing but just little dots.